We'll move on to item B, receive report from the San Bruno Police and Fire Departments regarding July 4th, 2020, Public Safety Service Calls and Other Information. Chief Johansson.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of council and members of the community listening at home. Try to get my screen share up here, so hopefully you can see the presentation. As mentioned, I am Ryan Johansson, your Chief of Police, and I'm here this evening to make a brief presentation, kind of reporting back on our 4th of July safety operations. I'll be joined by Fire Chief Ari Delay, who will present on the fire side of operations immediately following my presentation, and then we will both be prepared to take any questions you might have about the 4th of July operations from this year. So moving right into it, a little bit on the background of the 4th of July for us, right? The 4th of July presents a number of safety challenges for the police department. Among these is the obvious use of illegal fireworks before, during, and after the 4th of July. And as we'll see through this presentation, we are well aware of the fact that it is the illegal fireworks use is rampant, and we'll talk a little bit about what we do to try and mitigate some of it. However, additionally, we have large unruly gatherings that tend to come with the 4th of July celebration. And this year was no exception, although a little bit different with some of the shelter in place orders in COVID-19, which we will talk about. There's also a significant increase in alcohol use, which is problematic for the police department as dealing with violators, members of the public, when they're heavily inebriated is additionally challenging. And then this year, we had some additional challenges in conducting enforcement due to COVID-19 and the need to try and keep staff and the public safe while we go about our business. All of this is exacerbated when the fourth falls on a weekend, and it falling on a Saturday is even worse than when it falls on a Sunday. So I'll discuss that a little bit as well, but you'll see some increased numbers this year. I think they can be explained by the fact that more people are home with the shelter in place, and then also the fact that it fell on a Saturday always seems to make things a little bit more difficult for us from a law enforcement standpoint on the 4th of July. Every year, we conduct expansive education, prevention, and enforcement operations in an effort to mitigate some of these problems. And we'll talk specifically about what those things include. I did report back to you a couple of weeks ago about what you could anticipate our operations looking like. And that will report back on what the results of those things were. It's important to understand that these expansive education, prevention, and enforcement operations are essentially funded by the sale of safe and sane fireworks. And we'll talk about some of the experiences of other county cities with 4th of July in my presentation here tonight. And just know that the extensive enforcement that we conduct is facilitated by the fact that we have a funding source for it. I will come right out and say that I am well aware that all of the things I talk about tonight are not meant to pretend like I think that this stops the rampant illegal fireworks use. I simply want to illustrate that the police department is attempting to do everything it can to make the 4th of July enjoyable for all of our residents and visitors, and that we know that we're not stopping all of the illegal fireworks use that is problematic for folks, but doing everything within our power and trying to improve every single year in how we serve the community in this respect. So I told you I'd talk a little bit about other cities. Let's just discuss what some of the other cities in county, in the county experience in the 4th of July. These are the number of fireworks-related calls for service on the 4th of July alone for some other areas. And San Mateo, you can see it 172. East Palo Alto had 121. South San Francisco had 91. Daly City had 88. And none of these cities allow safe and sane fireworks. I just think this is important to illustrate that even when you don't sell or have safe and sane fireworks, illegal fireworks are a problem on the 4th of July. And to what degree that that varies based upon safe and sane sales is to be discussed, certainly. But I think this helps to illustrate that other cities are dealing with similar problems. And also of note is that they do not have the funding source we do for the large-scale enforcement operations that we deploy. And we'll talk about some of those costs and how they're covered in my presentation as we move forward. Generally, these cities actually do not respond to fireworks complaints, which is also important to understand. When you do not have the additional enforcement initiatives that we undertake, then their posture is to put out the information that the public calls in about illegal fireworks use as information for patrol units only. And they do not dispatch officers actively to these calls because they lack the resources to do so, which is certainly understandable when you look at these numbers. Now, Pacifica had 191 calls related to fireworks on the 4th of July, and this is the only other San Mateo County city that allows safe and sane fireworks use to sales. They conduct enforcement similar to ours, and they also fund fees imposed on the sale of safe and sane fireworks. So they have a similar model to ours. So we'll talk a little bit about the pre-4th of July operations, what we do in preparation. All department personnel, police department personnel are ordered to work the 4th of July. I know this has been talked about year over year, but I think it is worth mentioning again here because it truly is a fairly significant burden that these folks take on. I always mention each year that the 4th of July is my oldest daughter's birthday. She turned 18 this year on the 4th of July, and for the last 15 4th of Julias, I have been at work on her birthday. And so the police department does make a significant sacrifice in an effort to ensure that we are providing the best possible safe environment for our community that we can. We conduct and put together a robust incident action plan in advance. This takes into account data from previous years and attempts to allocate our resources as best we can in order to be effective. This is about a 40-page plan that really spells out how we're going to go about trying to conduct enforcement before, during, and after the 4th of July. We also created a joint fire and police public safety announcement and disseminated this via social media in an effort to kind of educate folks in advance. We conduct safety meetings along with the fire department with all booth operators. So every organization that wants to run a fireworks booth has to go through a safety meeting with PD and Fire, discussing not only the safety around the booth, but the importance of helping us to mitigate illegal fireworks sales and use through their efforts. That includes educational flyers that we provide to the booths that get placed into every single fireworks sale bag or with every single box that gets purchased, attempting to educate the public about the administrative fines and the consequences of using illegal fireworks within the city. We also put out informational warning notices to all city facilities. We make advanced contact with known violation locations with the police department. So we will go out to locations that were cited the previous year or where we know historically that we have large unruly gatherings traditionally year over year. We will attempt to contact the residents there and gain some cooperation from them in advance of the 4th to mitigate some of the issues before they begin. This year, we really began using data to focus our resource deployment. I think this is largely what is responsible for some of the improved results and will continue to be responsible for improved results year over year. The fact that we now have some aggregate data we can use in order to kind of concentrate where we spend some of our time in an effort to actually generate some results. You'll see when we talk about the timing of call volume, while the 4th of July seems like this really huge event, and it certainly is for PD and Fire, the reality is it's about a three-hour window of time that the most illegal activity is concentrated in. And so the more we can focus our resources where they belong, the more effective we can be in that really brief but somewhat aggressive timeframe. We also conduct dedicated firework enforcement details prior to the 4th, because as we all know, the fireworks are not only used on the 4th of July. This year, I think anecdotally, we could certainly all agree that they started even earlier than seems normal. And so we do put out some enforcement details in advance of the 4th. So 4th of July staffing, as I mentioned, all of the department personnel are ordered to work. This includes about 50 staff, officers, dispatchers, clerks, CSOs. It's not just uniformed cops. All these folks are making the sacrifice to be there on the 4th of July in an effort to try to make the holidays safe for you all. 36 sworn and 14 non-s sworn assigned to the detail. Many of these folks worked 16 consecutive hours on the 4th of July. Many of these folks started work at 7:00 a.m., working day shift, and then they stay over until 11:00 p.m. We do what we can to try and provide as many people as possible to keep things safe. We staff all of our patrol beats as usual, plus we have dedicated enforcement units that are deployed specifically for fireworks and illegal fireworks enforcement. Some of the tactics we deploy are marked and unmarked police units. This is important to note because sometimes you may have called in a complaint, and you may never see a police officer show up the way you're used to seeing a police officer. This is because not all of the cops that are working that night are driving black and white police cars. We're obviously a little bit more effective in catching some of the violators when we are a little bit more incognito. And so many of the units that are driving around are unmarked. Really, they look like civilian vehicles. We use both uniformed and plainclothes personnel for the same reason. We use bicycles and motorcycles in order to be more mobile through some of the neighborhoods. And we began, two years ago, we started using undercover surveillance. This has proved to be increasingly effective in the last couple of years, and I think you'll see when we talk about strategies for coming years, that expanding our use of undercover surveillance is probably a smart direction for us to move in. Very, very effective. We're also, it's very important to note that the 4th of July is not solely a police department operation. I know that Ari Chief Delay is going to talk about the fire operations, but there's an entire staff of dedicated fire personnel who come in to work the holiday. There's also parks personnel who come in to help us patrol the parks and keep them from becoming fire hazards and other safety issues. And then the streets department plays a huge role in the massive cleanup effort that has to occur after the 4th. So my hat is off to all of them for their sacrifices as well. This is not something the police department undertakes on its own. So calls for service, data, data, data. We handled about 276 calls for service on the 4th of July this year. This is a lot of calls for a department our size. The peak activity period was between 8:30 p.m. and 11:30 p.m., and during that timeframe, we handled about 177 of those 276 calls concentrated in a three-hour timeline. 182 of the 276 calls were fireworks-related. This is a significant increase from the 147 that we had last year, but it's actually not very many more than what we had the year before at 173 in 2018. So not a huge outlier. And the numbers are fairly normal for what we see when the 4th falls on an actual weekend day, either a Saturday or a Sunday. Most of these reports and calls we're getting still tend to be really quite vague and only marginally workable from a police standpoint. And I'll talk a bit about the process that we have to engage in in order to conduct this enforcement. But suffice it to say that when we get reports, folks that are doing the best they can to contribute to safety, but they're calling in and telling us a general area where there's aerial fireworks, and they're hearing thoms and explosions. This is not really information that's terribly helpful to the police department, to be quite frank. We see them, we know them. Finding out where these things are occurring is not the challenge. It's putting together the probable cause needed to make an actual, to issue an actual citation is a challenge, and we'll talk a bit more about that as we continue on. Again, officers have to actually on view violations or to issue a citation. This means that the officer has to specifically see exactly who commits what violation themselves. It's not enough to be told by someone else or even to see video. I'll expand a bit on that in a moment. Observationally, I will fully acknowledge that illegal fireworks did seem notably heavier this year than last and even than other recent years. We had far fewer large-scale gatherings, which I'm hopeful is because most people are attempting to contribute to the health crisis that we're all dealing with right now. But the reality is what this did is it really just kind of spread out the violations. Instead of having a handful of really big parties, we had a whole bunch of really small ones. And this kind of spread the violations around and probably made it seem and feel and sound even worse than it might have been. So let's talk about enforcement. The way that we conduct enforcement is through the issuance of a $1,000 administrative citation for possession and/or use of illegal fireworks. Anything that doesn't bear the state fire marshal's safety seal, pretty much anything that flies in the air or explodes is illegal. If we see you shoot it off or we find you in possession of it, we will issue the $1,000 administrative citation. Again, important to note here is that the sighting officer themselves has to directly observe a specific person committing a specific violation to issue these citations. I know that sounds somewhat ridiculous, but this is the way that the law works, and it's not something we can work around. The officer is then burdened with safely detaining the person that's committed this violation. And it's somewhat important to note that what we're dealing with here is essentially a municipal code violation. And because we're dealing with a relatively low-level violation, please understand that the police officers are faced with difficult decisions when it comes to resistance they might meet among people who are committing these violations or people who are running, fighting, belligerent, intoxicated, and how far a police officer is going to go to effectively issue that citation is something that we deal with every 4th of July and trying to give balance between providing the enforcement that our community wants and deserves, and while still ensuring the safety of the officers, the safety of the public, and mitigating potential liabilities to the city. So it's very, very challenging. I'll paint a little bit of a picture here for what this looks like. Essentially, we're driving around, riding around on bikes, walking around on foot, and we're observing the same violations that the community is. However, we have the burden of making sure we can find out exactly who is committing a given violation, and then we have to get in close enough to that individual before they disappear into a residence or into a backyard to safely detain them and issue an administrative citation. So I'm sure you can see this can be somewhat challenging. Also important to note that violators for these sections must be cited, not physically arrested. This is an administrative violation of the municipal code, and they're issued an administrative citation, not physically arrested and taken to jail. We have in the past used a health and safety code violation in lieu of the administrative citation. This is 12677 of the Health and Safety Code, which is a misdemeanor we can arrest for. However, after years of using that violation section, we came to realize that these folks were going to court, paying usually a $25 to $50 fine, and then going about their own business. So the feeling is that the $1,000 administrative citation serves as a much more effective deterrent, and that's why we focus on that section rather than the Health and Safety Code. It's also kind of important to understand that we can only seize evidence that's in plain view. This is not a case where because we caught you shooting off illegal fireworks, we can then go into a house or a garage or a car and begin seizing other fireworks, even when we kind of know they're there. And this presents a bit of a challenge because, as you'll see when we report on some of the results from this year, we actually issued five citations at one residence alone this year because we catch one person, take what we can see, and 10 minutes later, they're doing the same thing over again. And so we tried to deliver a message this year that was unacceptable by giving a lot of attention to the residences that refused to stop once they were just talked to by the police department. Resident-provided video has been a topic of discussion this year. It's important to understand that we value that if you've shot video of a neighbor or someone committing these offenses. But also important to understand that that alone is not enough for us to issue a citation. It's good for us to help develop some of the reasonable suspicion we need to move in and contact somebody, but we can't simply take a video from a member of the public and then issue a citation based upon that. Even if we can identify who the person is, we do need to on view the violation. We do have the ability to cite people who were in control of gatherings where illegal fireworks are being used, but there is the need for us to prove their knowledge and kind of condoning of what's going on. And the way we typically do that is that before we issue a citation to a homeowner, we typically issue a warning, letting them know that we're aware this is occurring at your residence or at your party that you're in control with or you're in control over at your gathering. And we let them know that we will commit a citation if we have to return to the residence, and that did occur multiple times this year and last year. So here is the data as it exists. This year, we issued 38 administrative citations. This is almost double what we issued last year at 21, and it's the most we have ever issued as a police department. Of the 38 people who were cited, 25 of them were San Bruno residents. This is higher than normal. Most years, we sit below 50% of the people cited are San Bruno residents. This year, it's, as you can see, notably over 50%. I mentioned that five sites were issued at one problem location, and I just want to tip my hat a little bit to my folks here. I believe that this enforcement activity is truly commendable, given the current environment that these folks are working in. It is scary to go out and contact members of the public and conduct enforcement when you don't know who's healthy and who isn't, and when there's a very serious health pandemic that we're all dealing with. And when you add to that some of the recent sentiment regarding police and some of the flat-out physical attacks that have been announced on police officers, I am exceedingly proud of the San Bruno Police Department's staff for being willing to go out and conduct the enforcement that they believe their community wants, despite those obvious challenges and despite putting themselves in harm's way throughout doing so. We seized about 58 pounds of live illegal fireworks. This is about 35 pounds over the annual average. We also seized about 100 pounds of spent fireworks. Our preliminary cost estimate, you can see here, I'm going to try to move my screen around so I can read it more appropriately. But this is how the costs break down for this year. The police department created a public service announcement that's mostly staff hours at $481 and change. The community services department provides staff on the 4th of July. That's about $1,700. The fire department has the fire marshal administrative and inspection hours. This is basically for inspecting the booths and ensuring that they're compliant and safe before they're operational at $2,400. The fire department's 4th of July staffing and logistics at about $13,000. The police department's 4th of July staffing and logistics at $28,000. The pre- and post-4th of July education, enforcement, and logistics, this is all from the police department at $5,700. Public Works cleanup costs, including labor and equipment, at $3,000 for a total of $55,527.07 this year. This is fairly consistent with the year-over-year what we tend to see. But this is the preliminary cost estimate that we've put together for this year's 4th of July operations. It is again important to note that these costs are covered by fees collected from safe and sane fireworks sales, and that cities without such a funding source do not conduct operations at the scale that we do. So every year, we conduct an annual debrief to go through what we did, what worked, what didn't work, what we want to change for the following year, and I'll share some of those findings with you now. We're still in the debriefing process from this year, but we do have some findings. We focus mostly on enhancing what works well. And as I mentioned earlier, we want to increase the use of our undercover surveillance units. This essentially puts undercover officers in plainclothes, walking the streets and directing in units to issue citations via cell phone. They can blend in more easily with the crowd, and they can observe specific violators, and it makes it a little bit easier for us to conduct enforcement. We want to continue expanding use of the responsible party clause. This is where I said that we can issue a citation to someone who's in control of a gathering or a homeowner. I think that it sends a pretty powerful message that if you're having a party, it is your responsibility to ensure that these things are not occurring at it. We will begin conducting buy-bust operations a little bit earlier next year. This is where we set up to purchase illegal fireworks with a police officer in order to take some inventory off the street and convey that they're not welcome in San Bruno. But I think that we learned this year, we need to start those a little bit earlier in the year in order for them to be effective. We'll increase our use of unmarked vehicles and decrease the use of marked units because they just stick out like a sore thumb. Expand our bike and foot patrols. Increase our use of data to direct our resources, which I already kind of spoke to earlier. We'll also focus on reducing or eliminating what's ineffective, and the only thing we've identified there, I already mentioned, which is that limiting our response to calls without specific locations and/or suspect information. So those generic calls of, you know, in this vicinity, I'm seeing aerial fireworks. It really kind of is a waste of our resources to go respond out to that when we're probably more effective continuing to work the enforcement that the officers are already working on on the street and trying to issue citations. And then we will be considering some other enhancements. Some of those things being considered as a return to the use of outside agency assistance in our details. Years ago, we used to bring other agencies into the city to assist with our operations in order to expand staffing. We did run into a number of issues with that, not the least of which is that those folks are a little less vested in the safety in our city just because they don't work for San Bruno. Additionally, is the fact that not all other agencies, not to be disparaging at all, but not all other agencies conduct business the same way that San Bruno PD does. And we like the way we do business. I think our community values it, and we want to protect that. But we will consider it, and then we'll also be evaluating some new observation technologies, their legality and their effectiveness for 4th of July fireworks enforcement. So that concludes my portion of the presentation, and I will turn it over to Chief Ari Delay to talk about the fire operations. Chief?
Great. Can everyone hear me okay?
You're echoing, chief.
Give me just a moment. Okay, are we good now?
You're good.
Great. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council. Ari Delay, your fire chief. Here today, this evening, to give you a brief overview of the fire department's operations for this year's 4th of July celebrations and events. If we can move on, Chief Johansson, with the next slide. So the 4th of July staffing for the San Bruno Fire Department. Day-to-day, we staff two ALS engine companies, one ALS ladder truck and one battalion chief in the city typically daily. So for the 4th of July festivities, we staffed one additional ALS engine company. We staffed all of our fire prevention folks. We're on duty as extra personnel that day, and myself as the fire chief was there as well. If we can move on there, chief. So to review some of our calls for service, the San Bruno Fire Department handled 24 calls for service on the 4th of July itself. And very similar to the police, our peak activity was between 9:30 and 1:30 a.m. with about half of our calls for service during this four-hour period alone at a total of 13. And 25% of our calls that day were fire-related for a total of six. The chart up on the screen is just a brief breakdown. We've noticed that there is an increase in fire-related calls during the weekend leading up to the 4th of July. And as you'll see, the period from June 6th through the 14th, we had one fire-related call and a total of 64 calls in the city. June 15th through 21st, no fire-related calls, which is fortunate, but a total of 72 calls for service in the city. And then the period from the 22nd through the 28th, we had nine fire-related calls for a total of 75 here in the city. And then that period that covers the 4th of July, the 29th through July 5th, we had a total of 13 fire-related calls and a total of 88 calls for service in the city. Some of the enforcement efforts, the fire department, we typically respond obviously to emergency calls, but we also provide patrols to patrol throughout the city. All of our engine companies, ladder trucks, battalion chiefs, fire prevention staff, and myself were out patrolling that evening specifically during the height of the activity. And I wanted to bring your attention to the picture that you see. This was taken from my vehicle, and it's something that I wanted to share with the council and the importance of those patrols. If you look in the picture, this is the intersection of San Bruno Avenue and El Camino Real. Our fire prevention staff who was out patrolling noticed some flames off in the distance, initiated a response from the fire department, and went to provide initial suppression efforts. We had an outside receptacle at a business right there at the intersection of San Bruno Avenue and El Camino, and those two trash receptacles were fully involved with fire, and we had a lot of brush that caught fire, and the flames were, as you can see, over the height of the roof of the building. So those patrols proved valuable this night, and it was early detection and the early suppression efforts of the fire prevention staff were able to get that fire detected and responded to quickly and preventing more damage. And obviously, in this time of COVID and all the fiscal situation, it's, you know, I think it's great that they were able to stop a fire from causing major damage to one of the structures and one of our businesses in our community. All right. Some of our observations from the fire department's perspective, again, very similar. The illegal fireworks were notably heavier this year than most, both legal and illegal, I would say. It was a very active night. I wanted to again highlight that our fire prevention staff was critical in that early detection of fire there at El Camino and San Bruno Avenue. And wanted to definitely make sure that we recognize the efforts of our public works and our San Bruno Parks Department for their work doing weed abatement throughout the city preceding the 4th of July celebrations and also the contractors that we had here in the city conducting weed abatement efforts as well. And then you'll be happy to note, an important piece is there was no injuries from the 4th of July activities. And that's kind of a wrap, and that's all we have from the fire department's perspective, and myself and Chief Johansson are here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you to both chiefs for your report and detailed data. Any questions or comments from my colleagues?
I think Laura was showing her hand.
Okay. I see a hand, but I didn't see, it's not attached to anybody, but thank you. Laura, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you so much. I was actually trying to find the raise the hand, and I couldn't find it, so all I can do is raise my hand. So I actually had a, so thank you. It's great presentations, a lot of details. I appreciate, I really do appreciate everything that Public Safety does. And, you know, I know what it's like to have your spouse not be home on special occasions and to know that every year, regardless of what you've got going on, the 4th of July, you're out there working and really defending our city and making sure that our residents stay safe. As many residents know and experienced, what a horrible few weeks leading up to the 4th of July. Just so many times, the illegal fireworks going off. And I realize how challenging that is because even when we're here and we're, we see it go off above us, we have no idea where it came from, even though it feels like it's in my backyard. So thank you for all that. I do have a question I just wanted to ask about the police chief Johansson. You commented on if I'm throwing a party that I can get cited for having some, even though, I guess I wanted to know, even if you didn't see anything at my property, actually see somebody light it, because you know that that group of 50 people over at that house, that party, is actually shooting off of local fireworks. Could you cite them? And kind of want to know a little bit more about that.
Yeah, the short answer to your question, Councilmember Davis, is yes. If the officer, you know, has the cause to believe that the fireworks are coming from that gathering, that party, that residence, then we do have the authority to issue a citation to the person that we deem to be responsible for that party. Usually, this will be the homeowner or the renter, the person that is kind of in control. As I mentioned, we usually, not usually, we will always issue a warning in advance to that homeowner, saying, "Look, we know the fireworks are associated with your residence. Oftentimes, it's because they're occurring in backyards or somewhere we don't readily want to go." And we tell them, "We're not going to tolerate it all night just because you're in your backyard. If we have to come back out and we see the same thing, we're going to issue you a citation, regardless of whether you're the one that lit the firework or not."
Yeah, that's good because I can't even imagine how you guys can actually physically see somebody lighting a fireworks, how complicated that is with crowds and people and the darkness. So I think we need to publicize that information and get it out there so we really can discourage the use of illegal fireworks. So thank you.
Councilmember Mason?
Hi, I just wanted to thank everyone. We had our family out during some of our safe and sane fireworks, and we had a number of police cars come by, very respectful of the street and the people who were on it. And I also wanted to make sure I thanked the fire department. You know, every year, people do these illegal fireworks, and we're out checking to make sure that our roofs don't catch on fire. So it's really nice. So it's really nice because we just saw so much, there was so much, not just transparency, but you really felt that there was a presence by both the fire and police on the 4th of July. And I just want to say it's really very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from council at this time? Okay, we have, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor Salazar.
I was just going to add my thanks as well to both of the chiefs and your staff for all the extra work that you guys put in. So you guys did a great job. Sounds like, you know, we got through unscathed, but it was, it was, there definitely all the efforts that you guys put in ahead of time and all the work that you guys put into it. So much appreciated. Pass along the thanks.
And Councilmember Medina.
Yes, I want to join that group of letting you guys know how much appreciated your work is, being away from your families and not being able to kind of enjoy a special event. So thank you. And I think the biggest thing to stress to our community is how difficult it really is. Where I was in a socially-distanced backyard with a couple other people and fireworks were going over on one side of the house and then the other side of the house. And it's like, okay, I think it's over there, but knowing that you have to witness it. I mean, it's extraordinarily difficult. So thank you for what you've done.
And we do have a member of the public, a city clerk.
Yes, it's Stephen Seymour. Stephen, just one moment while I bring you in. Although it could be Sandra. Hi, Stephen or Sandra, can you hear us?
Hi, I can hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, this is Sandra Perez Vargas. I'm calling because this is the first year that I felt so completely confident that everything that could be done would be done to find people who are blowing off all those fireworks, and the numbers really reflect that. I'm so very grateful to the chief of police and the fire chief. I think you guys did a wonderful job, and I think there was a lot of talk afterwards once the numbers came out of the citations that were given. It just really showed how hard you worked. And I was wondering, I don't know the legality of this, but as another deterrent, if the people who were cited, if their names were made public, I don't know if that's something you're interested in pursuing because that might make some people in the community think twice about doing that next year. So just a thought off the top of my head. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Sandra. And then with no other hands from council members or from members of the community, and then the city clerk can correct me. I also want to add what my colleagues have said and to both chiefs and the staff and the team that went out not only in inspections and the education and the enforcement. Two tickets were issued, memory is going to say on June 26th at 1:24 a.m. So it was starting earlier to try to have that pre-enforcement. And of course, I can tell you personally that in speaking to electeds or mayors from Daly City, South City, San Mateo, Belmont, they also experienced challenges with the illegals from prior to June 28th, which was the first time Safe and Same were allowed to be sold in San Bruno. And I did speak to Pacifica, they experienced, they do Safe and Same. But all communities seem to be having this challenge and this increase to that. So I just want to thank you both again, and it is something, thanks to the sale of the fireworks, we're allowed to have additional staffing. The debate of whether we should have it Safe and Same or not, but that staffing allows us to do these things and have that enforcement where in other communities, as I've heard, it's regular staffing for the most part. And so they can't barge it at some point, they just try to keep it contained. So, and it is, as other of my colleagues have said, it is giving up of your time and from your family and friends and loved ones. And so thank you, and please convey back to your departments. And that means Public Works, that means community service, that means all those folks who made a difference and who were there on the 4th of July for the residents of San Bruno. So thank you.